I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. How's Nick?
I'm good. How you been?
I'm good.
I was at the last meeting to approve the...
Okay. Two unstable was the next time then? There was something beside Mike. Are we gonna have to go down to the... I can't think of anything. All right. Payroll. We got payroll in the amount of $230,806.32. And then Union Hospital of $1,657.99.
I make a motion to approve payroll in the amount $230,806.32. And Union Hospital of $1,657.99.
Yeah, I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What is this?
Fifty.
Fifty. All right, then we need to acknowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report. And that amounts to $195,436.17.
$195 or $196?
Oh, $196.
Okay. I make a motion to acknowledge received payroll claims amount $196,436.17.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go ahead and put these on. I might help more. Oh, I know what it was. I remember what it was. Good. All right, you have now cycle check.
We have four of them. One of them is digital view video. And Jason McCarr.
Okay.
Once it's done, it's for $4,733. It's an 18-channel video.
And the best one is probably from a grant. So you have the funds in place to do that?
Comes out of Council Fund.
Do you go through?
Wall mount bracket. I'm thinking it's to do with the cameras updating.
Yeah, it is. We choose its branch. So we think the Council already approved it?
There's money in there.
Okay. We can approve contingent upon the Council approving it?
And then the other three are core facilities, guaranteed roofing, and royalty service, which is pressure cleaning.
Okay.
For the jail. $2,020 for the pressure cleaning. $20,091.55, which is half of the payment.
Okay.
For guaranteed roofing. And $18,534.88 for core.
Okay.
Where are we paying that out of? I can't remember.
Wasn't the jail all our money?
Yeah, I think it was, wasn't it?
Okay, we have to...
No one's ever told me any word.
And I can't remember. Back in 2022, they did additional appropriation for the jail of $300,000, some thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But it wasn't spent, so we need to do another additional appropriation for it.
I'm confident that came out of the art fund.
I feel confident.
Roy would know better than I would exactly where that's coming from.
I'll call him, but I was gonna ask you first.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm confident that's where it is, but he's the budget guy, not me. Okay, I make the motion that we approve the out of cycle checks as presented. Total amount of $45,559.43.
But the one for the digital videos contingent upon the Council approval?
Yes, a good point. Yes.
And I'll second that.
Add that to the minutes of your whether it's contingent, the $47.33, the digital contingent upon the Council approval. Otherwise, we don't know where the funds are coming from. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bruce's name would be here today. He's at the Fair Course. And he left notice that if somebody came out that he needed to be here, he could do it. But he's got the obligations out there with the hog show, his swine show stuff. Okay. Nicole. How you been?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good.
I'm going to apply for the 2024 Hoggle Electoral Security Local Grant. It's to the Secretary of State. They did it last year. We didn't apply then because they didn't know what exactly they need. But this year, they got a million dollars. And they're going with the counties that didn't apply last year, kind of first. So we're gonna request $5,500 to repair the handicap doors at Marshall Federal Church. So that's what we're gonna request for.
I always feel guilty when people like you come to request the permission to go for a grant. I just always want to make sure everybody understands. We're not here to judge equality for grant requests. We are obligated by the state to approve all the grants just to make sure that we don't have multiple county entities competing for the same grant money. That's not the case here. So I'd make the motion that we approve the grant request.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
I just don't want you to think we're telling you how to run your business. It's just what the state requires. So we hear those and we approve them ahead of time.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Stephanie.
Okay, I have...
Come on up if you don't mind. I'd like to sit there someplace so we can hear and record you. We can record every word so we know exactly what you said. And we'll get you if you need to. The communication we had for your meeting, was that email?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to find where I had the email and I responded to you. I felt bad when I missed your meeting, but it was just last second. I was actually out in the woods with my tractor. And I've been one of the arms. And I couldn't get the equipment on and had to be on, had to be done that day. So I had to take that under green cast. So they said if I was there by 1:00, they could fix it that day. So that's when I packed up and left. So I abandoned you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you. So what I had originally sent Mary Ann was five applications. There's actually only four. So you might have in your stack of applications a grant, a grant application for Southwest Parks School Corporation. You might have two. And one, just a minute, one, just to start with one. They are only applying for one $20,000 grant.
Okay. Let me find the $20,000. I don't even know if we're talking about here. Yes, I got it. Okay.
Okay. I am going to start with the grant from Hamilton Center. This grant goes for Hamilton Center to request $1,568.80 to purchase the Too Good for Drugs curriculum, which will be used for sixth through 12th grade. Is that right? Sixth through 12th grade.
Okay.
And this will be used in their... This is the Too Good for Drugs program. And it is adolescent teen substance use curriculum. This curriculum will be utilized for group and/or individual services. Hamilton Center will be working with the Juvenile Probation, DCS, and Park County Community Schools to increase services related to substance and teens. And we would be utilizing these funds to purchase the Too Good for Drugs program. And the curriculum cost breaks down that it is $515.95 for high school, $350.95 for eighth grade, the same amount for seventh and for sixth grade, which is a total of $1,568.80. So this, this application has been approved by the LCC.
Okay.
It's also been approved in the J-Rac meeting that was held on Friday. And the application meets the eligibility requirements, Section B, number eight, 10, and 14, as well as G9, 11 and 12.
We don't really need CL, though. Really, as far as I'm concerned, again, we're just following the state's directive that we just don't turn that money over to the LLC to do. We have to prove those things. My attitude, I think, is the end as well, is if your committee has approved these as a way to spend the money that you have coming to you, we're okay with that. We just need to know and have the accountability on record of that's what those grant requests were for. So once, you don't need to go through all those details for us because you went through all those details with your committee to get them approved. And that's all really matters to us.
Okay, perfect. All right. And the next one is for Southwest Park School Corporation. And this will be... That will, they will be doing evidence-based programming in the schools. And this is for those school kids that maybe don't have insurance or maybe don't have resources to assist with those costs. So they are applying for this. They did have a grant prior, but that grant has been, it's been eliminated.
Okay.
So they, this will be, opioid funding will be used to develop skills to combat addictions that start at an early age. When youth are provided the resources to resist opioids and other drugs, they make stronger decisions, are stronger choices in life. And the Southwest...
Excuse me just a second. Susan, would you mind? I hate sending you information. But would you ask him to close his door? I can hear him really strong up here. Go ahead.
And so these, so Southwest Park Community School Corporation will collaborate with Hamilton Center to provide small group programming with students. The groups will actively engage students in learning self-control, coping skills, decision-making, and conflict resolution skills that will help improve their ability to risk-resist drugs later in life. And they are requesting $20,000 for the 2024-2025 school year.
Okay. Yeah, we got that. We got that one.
And the next one is for the Park County Sheriff's Office. And this is in the amount of $8,000, $8,000 to assist with the activities for the National Night Out, which is being held during the fair week this Thursday. So in addition to the mission of National Night Out, drug prevention and involving community involvement with the law enforcement, there will also be information on our Drug Takeback Box that operates 24/7 at the Sheriff's Office and the availability of NAMH in our community.
On the Drug Takeback Box, I've had questions in the past. Are they, is that one location, the only location we have?
Yes.
Is that sufficient? Do you think there are people who are hesitant to come to the Sheriff's Department to do that? If we had a box someplace else, maybe in the courthouse, they might take more advantage of it?
Yeah, I don't think courthouse could add that idea. But I think, I don't know, do you have pharmacy or CVS that may have one?
They used to. I believe they did away with it.
Did they? I can just see people being reluctant to come to the Sheriff's Department to take care of it.
I've had paraphernalia dropped off in our box. So I mean, I don't think they're too scared.
Not too scared? If you think it's okay, we'll leave it. But I'm not opposed to having one in the courthouse someplace in the basement if we needed, needed to do that.
Yeah, I don't, it would hurt.
Are those boxes expensive to get? How do you get to those things? What do you do with them?
The liners, what were they, a couple hundred dollars per liner? So that's, I get about, that's one a month.
Okay.
The box itself, I, we bought it up through a grant, so it's around a couple thousand dollars maybe.
Would you be interested in pursuing a grant if we gave you permission to put one in the courthouse?
I pursued United Way and they did everything, so it wasn't really my grant. But we could, we could look at doing it.
If you don't mind pursuing it, we're just, we're certainly...
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're good with putting one in the courthouse if we'd like to do that down the basement someplace. Maybe down by the health department somewhere.
I mean, ours fills up all the time, so I think it's good to have. I send the box out like once a month, like I said.
Okay.
And then we'll, once in a while, we'll have it at Fairgrounds Thursday, the drop-off box. So yeah, the more, the merrier, I guess.
I can see being a concern, be going to the Sheriff's Department with that stuff that you're gonna drop off and...
Yeah. We try to keep it low-key. It's like a post office box out there.
Yeah.
What are legal restrictions on where you can place one of those?
Don't know. That's what we need to find out. Don't know. I don't know how, how those things are protected from someone breaking into them and getting the paraphernalia out of them.
Yeah, they're pretty secure, but...
Are they? Okay. I'd be interested to find out more about it. No rush, just sometime. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But that's okay. So they are, so the Sheriff's Office is requesting $8,000.
Okay.
And for those three applications, we are requesting that they be paid out of Fund 1237, the opioid restricted.
You know what that is?
Funds.
Okay. Audrey's aware of that.
And the balance is $118,669.61 in that fund.
And that's, that's your full request then?
Well, for, out of that fund, 1237.
I'd make the motion then that we ought to approve, accepting as a request as presented, to come out of that fund?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, what else you got?
Okay. And the last application we've had is for the Park County Sheriff's Office to purchase three license plate readers. And with your application, you'll have, you have a copy of the invoice.
Yeah.
And this will be, or Jason, would you like to give them more information?
We'll place in three license plate readers.
How does it work?
Strategic areas.
How does that work? Do you just post them someplace?
They kept, catch a picture of the license plate.
Okay.
And we could send out words for like, we're looking for this certain plate number.
Gotcha. Okay.
And we also would give permission from surrounding agencies throughout the state and country even, to link into their cameras. And we can see where this certain car went and get alert where it comes in Park County.
So it reads those plates? And if that plate's on the list for a bolo, that just like identifies that that's been sighted?
And tell us if you're suspended, you know, suspended driver's license, expired license plate, that kind of thing.
Okay. And you're approving that request then?
Yes. The LCC and the J-Rac Committee has approved this. And with this particular request, we would like to request it be paid out of Fund 1238, the opioid unrestricted funds. And in that balance, there's $50,866.63.
You got that, ma'am?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what's the total on that?
$10,950.
I saw the parts down there, discounts about the platform 30,000. I was curious where that came into play. Okay, I'd make the motion then that we approve the request for funding as, by the LCC, as presented for the Sheriff's Department on the readers in the amount of $10,950.
Yep.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good work. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks.
Okay. On new business, actually, it's old business. We're going to old business. I got a couple of things that we need, Commissioners. I talked to the Council last week. We had talked before about approving a stipend for Mike Wood. Mike Wood was, is a Highway Department worker. When Randy and Norman had his stroke and could not come to work, Mike Wood was scheduled to be on vacation there the next week or more. He canceled that, stayed on-site. He took over Randy's job as far as scheduling the events for the day, doing all the superintendent work for that time. And I think it was 10 weeks, I think, that he operated at about, about that amount. So our recommendation from the Commissioners, as we spoke about that before, was a $1,000 stipend for covering that extra duty. And he did it very well. And so I talked with the Council, and they just want a request from us, requesting that to be done. So I make the motion that we request the Council give Mike Wood a stipend of $1,000 for his, filling in as interim superintendent in Randy's absence.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. And the second part of the Mike Wood is, you know, we've already approved him being road foreman. But there was no funding attached on that line, that funding getting removed from that line. And the Council asked for a request from us. So I would make the request to the Council that they go ahead and pay that, that road foreman, the normal road foreman position, which actually is $1 an hour, more.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. So Mary Ann, would you let the Council know that we've approved those and ask them for a request for those? All right, thank you. All right. Now we have copy of replacement bids.
I had an expedia worked up for you. And then right before I came over here, Charles gave us...
A new one?
Yes. I didn't get the whole thing then and there. But I did get the monthly lease, not the additional.
Okay.
And...
I don't have his old one in front of me. Did the numbers change much? Remember what the old one was?
You can get this one.
If I can read the...
Fine print. Need to hold it.
Andrews was, the lease payment was $1,615.88. And Charles is $1,345.83.
Okay. The nice thing about this move is that it's, it gets all of our machines with one company, one service contract, one beginning date for all of them. And Charles assured us that they could do that, they can move whatever contracts they had to, to start by...
The new one, because he reduced some and increased some because they wanted color. And he, Charles's number is now $1,392.11. So it's still a lot less.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Now I think we just need to pull the trigger in this one. You got any questions, Dan?
I have none. No.
We found that Charles, now that he knows the person in Park County, he's communicating with us a lot more than the last four years before me.
And is actually, his numbers are still less than $50, more than his original estimates.
Yeah.
And the nice thing about him is our experience with him has been that they, company tries to have a four-hour window. If they call in the morning with the problem, they'll have somebody there that afternoon.
Yeah.
And that's all you can ask for. And the machines are all the same, so if some machine in one office now fails, they can go to another office and do what they need.
And still get a ticket for it.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it.
Is that, is that your motion then?
Yep.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to go with, actually, what's the name of this company?
Uh, Rico.
Just Rico, period?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if you had another name, but you'll do with business through Rico.
It's strictly...
That we go with Rico then and Charles for the printer. Agreed?
He wants you, okay, he will give us the formal lease.
And then you can look at that.
But we've been going back and forth.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Um, any department, department, had you funny little dressed people back there in the back? Anything, anything there that's going on, we need to know about?
No, they're just having a ball.
Okay, okay. Sheriff, what you got? Anything for us today?
No, I just wanted to make sure Stephanie was here.
Okay.
But no, I don't have anything.
Did he come out and check your roof after you had the leak last time?
Uh, he said he was coming, but I've been at the fair all week.
Okay.
I haven't seen him.
May, may no more tomorrow. Supposed to be a lot of rain tomorrow, so...
Yeah, we'll find.
We'll see. Okay. Fine. Anybody else have anything for the good cause? John, good to see you back. Glad you're...
Always be glad. This thing that I texted you about, one of our roads that has the truck limits on it is one of the detours for the, is it 59?
Yeah, Otter Creek Bridge or something.
It has a, so it's one of the roads that has our truck limit ordinance on it, so I don't...
720, 900.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to suspend that for use with the detour?
Is it because of the bridge or...
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're working on.
Is that an official detour or an unofficial detour?
Yeah, I don't, I can't remember how long it's been here, September.
If there's a limit on the bridge that the state's put on there after inspecting it, the state should know they couldn't use that as an official detour.
I saw these on 41 for 59, going, sending them down 41.
That's the official.
That should be official.
She, she texted that the state highway is directing traffic off of 59 onto 720 South. And it's a no semi road.
Well, them directing traffic should not change to no semi road.
The state actually has detour error signs putting semis on that road.
Yeah. We should not have, yeah, should not have semis going on that road. So we want to suspend that? Have they already done 720? Has it been, that was community crossing money. Have they already done 720? Or is that coming up?
I think 720 is on the other end. I don't know how, how they'll redo it. But I don't know on the detour. Are they heading them?
They have them going 720 to...
East?
Yeah. 775 east, and then to 900, and then 900 back onto 59. And then vice versa, if you're going northbound.
775 is one we're going to, if that's the right location. It's in the community crossing, paid me for this go around. So it must not have been paid yet. It's the unofficial, it's the unofficial, I understand the unofficial part of it. But we're not required to let semis go that way. But we don't want to be a pain about that either. And they are going to make whatever repairs are necessary, right, with the unofficial?
Uh, they're supposed to.
But the unofficial shouldn't be semized anyway. The unofficial is for emergency vehicles and local traffic is what the unofficial should be.
So how do they notify them that they can't take semis on that road?
I have the Highway Department reach out to...
Okay, I'll talk to...
End dot.
Yeah.
Okay. Talk to Luke then.
And if he needs a copy of the ordinance, I don't know if you could email that to me tomorrow? I can send it to Luke.
About...
The Highway, I mean the...
720.
Truck route, 720. Because I have what I drafted, but I don't have the signed ordinance.
Because I think you ticketed someone on 720 just not long ago, didn't you?
No, we did 275 north.
Ah.
We did that pretty hard.
Okay. And we need to work on 275. There was one today when I was at the lumberyard. He came in and I jumped him about.
On 275?
Yeah. And he was unaware of that until he turned off the road. And the sign's back off the road a little bit, and you couldn't see it. Then he had five cars, to be honest, so he couldn't back out on the highway. So he knows now how to go, whether you will or not, I don't know. But at least knows that. We need, I'll talk to Luke, we need a bigger sign out by the road. I thought about that before, because you really don't see that until you start to make the turn. Now you're stuck. So we need to get that out on, on the highway saying no semis at the next, and even a line saying that truck routes, next, next road to the right, and it is.
I think we've issued three tickets in the last couple of weeks.
Okay. Okay. So I talked to Luke then about notifying Endot that they, semis are not allowed on that road on 720?
Might be a good thing to have for the actual road that you're wanting to direct them down. Have a sign that says official truck route or something like that out by 41.
Yeah, that's why I agree with that. Yeah.
Because I don't think we do. I'm not sure, but...
Doesn't explain anything. It just says no semis, but...
That's how Luke did it. I'll have Luke work on that. We'll have to order signs, but if that's okay with you all, have him get that done.
Yeah, definitely.
Get that done. Okay.
I, yeah. We're in the process of an audit from the State Board of Accounts. And I found out today, the federal, the State Board of Accounts for the federal. Our fund is coming next week. The meeting for you is the 17th at 1:30.
Ooh, that may be a problem. Let me see here, the 17th.
Well, you said I could do it anytime.
Except for the 17th is the one.
Yeah, I don't remember saying that. There's other dates here, but let me, let me see here real quick.
Can someone, one, the other? Can someone, when the other commissioners come? It's going to be about fifteen minutes for each, for the state and for the federal.
And that's going to be at nine o'clock.
Sounds to me like that'd be a good job for Bruce.
No, one thirty.
He'd enjoy that.
Bruce is not here and he might need a no friend.
I'd make a motion that we have Bruce, uh, to notify him of that.
I'll second.
Also, I would note that if you guys knew that Cassie's not working right now. She had a, our trouble.
She is working from home, I understand.
JB, who is on the planning and zoning commission, was in today and he made a sign on the door to contact the assessor's office.
Uh, what we're talking about is our planning officer, who does the building permits, had a health issue, unable to come to work. But typically in those circumstances where she's not able to issue those, the assessors office will issue the building permits. So that's, uh, it might be the paper here, no paper's on here in state making, maybe know about that. Can you get in the paper too? I'll try and message out on Facebook too, is that they can go there. Good on the people have to wait for those permits to get going. Okay?
That's it.
Anybody else have anything for, yes?
I'm gonna speak.
I just thought you came because of her stuff. Okay. Sure, you're always on.
I actually am taking my work hat off and putting my resident, the Park County hat on. So when I talk, it's because I'm a resident here also.
Okay.
So, um, I know commissioners designated a day for the Riverton or the Park Heritage Dance Team after they won some state competition. We have two wrestlers, Katie Dowell and Joshua Oshman. Katie's a senior at Park Heritage High School. She just graduated. And Josh is a freshman at Riverton Park. Both of them made the national wrestling competition in Fargo, North Dakota. Um, they are there right now wrestling for Park County, for the state of Indiana. Top one hundred, hundred and fifty wrestlers in the, in the nation. And so I don't know who decides or comes up with a plan to honor these kids, but.
Those are always tough. I was a wrestling coach for years. And I know how those things, you're invited to come to do those things to represent your area. It's not a competition that you want to get to that point. You're just, you're just invited, which is really not to be invited. I understand that, but it wasn't like a tournament to get to that, to get to that point. So I understand it. Is that correct?
That is not correct. So you have to get to pass regionals and then you have to wrestle in, into being the top one hundred placed in the state of Indiana to wrestle for Indiana.
Okay. Top one hundred in Indiana?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
It's a hundred in girls, a hundred and fifty in boys.
Certainly an honor. I don't know if it's the rise of level of being a state champion if you're in the top one hundred of, of, of an event. Those are always a tough thing. Once you start down that road, who do you, who do you award and who you're not awarded to? We have always just recognized state champions. And our signage on the posts, on outside posts have always been for state champions. There's really no other way for us to delineate the value. And that's what my biggest fear is, is not recognizing someone to make them think that they weren't valued. So the best way to have a clear-cut criteria is always just been state champions that we do.
I just wanted to bring it.
I understand the competition and I understand that. I, I was there when we had our state champion wrestler, Ryan Priville, who won the state. And Jeremy Swaim came close. He, he got to go to state, but he was not the state champ. And, uh, and you want to award them the same too, same recognition too.
So these kids both wrestled at state and based on their placement, they got into the national competitions.
I understand how that works. Yeah. Um, we could certainly congratulate them on that effort. And it's just, especially for a freshman to be, be at that level. So it's got a bright future there in front of them too. But I hope they would understand that we, if they had been state champions, we would have done that.
Absolutely.
That's the criteria that we use for it. If that's okay with you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Otherwise, we get into regional champs and sectional champs. And where do you go, where do you go with that? They're all deserved well, deserve things, but you gotta do some criteria, so. We, not to say we couldn't change it, but right now it's state champions that we recognize, so. Wish them luck on our behalf, if you would.
I will.
That's great. Great stuff. Especially for the girl. Now they, do they have just girls wrestling now?
Yes.
When it first started, girls wrestled boys. And that is a tough way to go, which I thought was a silly way, way to go. Um, it's just intimidating all the way around for everybody involved. So I, I knew they were starting girls. How long have they had girls wrestling?
It was official in twenty twenty-three.
Okay. I thought just a year. Yeah, I thought so. I, um, I started a girls tennis program, but turned around when I was coaching. I think we didn't have girls, girls tennis program. We had boys. I was coaching boys, but there was no girls team, so we got that started. I think those things for those, uh, folks to, to have their own recognition.
Absolutely.
Which is so invasive now with the, uh, the transgender stuff coming up. How do you solve that issue? I'm glad that's not my issue to call, so someone has to decide that at some point.
I have a question.
Yep.
Can a, can a girl still choose to wrestle in the men's league?
Yeah. Actually, the, it's the, the girls wrestling is the fastest national growing sport since it's been identified as a sport. And, um, they still wrestle boys. And actually, when you look at like Katie's wrestling, uh, her accomplishments, it looks like she has a horrible losing record. And it's because she wrestles so many boys.
Sure.
Because she wants the competition and they're often stronger and more physical. So she loses a lot, but it, it makes her stronger when she wrestles with girls.
There's a couple of girls that wrestled when I was in seventh grade. You didn't want to wrestle them. You didn't.
They're some of the most flexible wrestlers you ever meet, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else anything for the day? All right, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
And I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. All right, we're good.
Can we raise your, give me a break?
Oh.
And I know, and cell phone is very important compared to everything else.
Oh, what you got? That's okay. You got something.
I had talked to Cassie about some vague problems. And I didn't know if she'd been able to talk to you or she's.
We haven't talked to her about that and I'm not sure. Um, it was last week, I think, when she had her event, so she's not really communicating. She's still doing some stuff, uh, online, which she's not supposed to be doing, but she is because you know how Cassie is. But I've had no communication with her or any specific things at all.
I didn't know if somebody else took her place, you know?
The assessor's office is taking over the responsibility for the building permits. But as far as anything else, I doubt that. I doubt that anything has changed.